All right, the East Long Meadow Public Schools Committee meeting. Um, January 27th, 2025, and it's 5:08. Would everyone please stand for the questions?
I'd like to be first to give the question of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Right? I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. If there's anyone else recording, would you please let us know? Right, um, roll call. Samantha?
Samantha Blask with the secretary.
Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Sarah Truleau.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
It's Nella Rochella.
William Crother.
Amy Delanta.
Heather Brown, Director of Curriculum.
Emmanuel Garcia, Student Representative.
The first item on the agenda, approval of minutes. I move to approve the January 6th, 2025 regular session meeting minutes. Right, so Sarah and William seconded in. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's four to zero.
One.
Uh, he's just absent, so, okay, yep.
Zero.
All right, um, move on to committee and subcommittee communications. Sarah, would you like to start?
Um, so Amy and I both attended the diversity committee meeting last week, I believe. Um, we spoke about different opportunities to diversify the workforce here in East Long Meadow Public Schools. Um, there's going to be some subcommittees formed from that. And again, we have a great cross-section of individuals, um, from both the school department, from local, um, community organizations, and from within the school committee itself. And both Heather and Gordon facilitated that conversation. Um, and then I also was at the collaborative meeting this past week. Uh, we talked about the Educator Support Personnel Award, which is really what the state is looking, or Desi's looking to use to rename when we talk about paraprofessionals. So thinking about recognizing and honoring those individuals who are going above and beyond through an education support personnel award. And we also, um, later on, when we get to the calendar, I'll bring back the feedback from the collaborative committee base on it.
Uh, William?
No report this time.
Nothing additional to what Sarah spoke about, thank you.
Okay. There is the E-Leaf Gala. Gala, it'll be February 8th. But tomorrow, is that the last date to buy tickets online?
I thought it was Wednesday.
Wednesday? The 29th, and that's Wednesday.
I told administrators it was Wednesday.
Yeah, no, then you're right. I'm gonna say that's off. I saw that it was the 29th. Emmanuel?
Uh, only thing I have was, uh, varsity wrestling had their senior night last week.
Very nice, thanks. How did it go?
It went pretty good.
Thank you. And any opportunity for visitors to address the committee? And presentations. Uh, approval of the ELHS student exchange for the fall of 2025 and April 2026 with a school in Spain.
We have Ms. Rivera with us this evening, who is one of our world language teachers at the high school. And in your packets, you have a proposal from Ms. Rivera regarding this exchange, which, um, is not a full school year. I know that that was one of the questions. Um, it's more around a week or a week and some days on, in the fall and then in the spring. And I'll let Ms. Rivera pick it up from there.
So as you read in your proposal, um, we've been getting kids from Spain to East Long Meadow High School, giving, um, families and students in the town an opportunity to host just for two weeks. Um, usually between 10 and 15 kids come. And so we will be looking, uh, for families that are available to host and willing to do that. Ideally, um, 10 of those host families will have kids who plan to travel in April of the following year. So those kids will already know each other, they will have already met. Um, and then our students will have an opportunity to go to Spain. During both exchanges, they attend classes, so they'll be able to see how the educational system works. Um, they'll be living with families, so they'll have a direct view of food, culture, family, all of those different things, even like living situations. They're in a bigger city, they might be in an apartment, something like that. Um, and as I've experienced just from hosting yearly, there's this incredible ripple effect. Um, bringing the students to our school really affects our whole community at East Long Meadow High School. And then even if the, the host families have smaller siblings or whatever, and then when our students go, they're obviously going to bring back, um, their experience. And if we can continue this, maybe encourage future students to go.
After questions regarding that? We think it coincides with the April vacation, which is why we selected April. And, um, from what Ms. Rivera was telling me earlier, um, the, uh, school in Spain has some type of vacation in the fall. So missing only a few school days in either district. I don't know if they call it district over there.
I don't know.
Either school system.
So will their, their kids will come here for two weeks and our kids will only go there for one?
Our kids will.
For one and change.
Okay, change, yeah, yeah. So like definitely during our, we will plan it, so it's definitely during our April break. And then they might, but because it's educational and academic, trying to support that, yeah.
Any other question? All right. And, I'm sorry, is this just to get the planning started?
Exactly, so once I have your approval, I can start, um, filling out the, the paperwork to match the schools and stuff like that.
That's good, thank you for the question.
Make a motion to approve the ELHS student exchange for the fall of 2025 and April 2026 with a school in Spain, as proposed.
Second. William second. neighbor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Bonnie? Thank you for doing this.
I'm glad you're waiting for sure.
No, you're welcome, miss. You can call it. All right, thank you.
I ran from my house.
Wow. I had, I had it.
Far from the parking lot. My apologies, everyone. Jimmy, please.
All right, next item on the agenda. Um, fiscal year 25, second quarter financial report.
So, good evening, everyone. Uh, in your packet, as Mr. Villa just said, we have the update for you. Um, if you go right to page six, that's where the spreadsheet is, where I always tell you I put the salary on the top section and the expense side on the bottom. Um, the first thing I would like to bring to your attention is halfway down on the salary side, the teeth, uh, that line item there, the revised budget is now $21,147,063. Back in November, that was $21,643,956. So I've reduced that by $496,892 from that line item there in the salmon color down below to the out-of-district tuition line. Um, that was the first thing I wanted to remind you of.
What page is that?
Oh, I'm so sorry, page six.
Okay.
So the salmon color there, the top you'll see, and then the bottom where it was moved to. Uh, the second thing was, a journal entry has been done to reclass the expenses in the teacher line item to the school choice. So that's the green color there. And if you look back at any reports from November, you would see that that was higher. So I just wanted to, again, to be transparent and remind everybody of that. The third thing is in the blue, and that's the overage in the circuit breaker expenditures that were reported to you have been reclassified to the operating budget out-of-district tuition account so that we report special ed expenditures accurately. Remember, just a reminder, that line item was a projected deficit of 7,579,290. And now you're going to see it's at 2,971,960. So it has not completely gone away, um, which we kind of had talked about. We didn't want to move it all because there's always moving pieces behind the scenes. Um, what I do want you to know is, uh, the last thing, where I have those asterisks over to the right there, to the account numbers, those are line items that I am projecting will have available balances, to be able to offset that, uh, potential deficit there in the out-of-district line item.
The 297.
Correct, the 297. And I just would like to remind everybody that these things can change all the time. Um, as of right now, this is how I see the picture. Um, what I also would like you to know is that after, uh, talking, um, internally here in central office and with the leadership team, and I wanted to bring it to you as the school committee, we are going to put a freeze on non-essential purchases so we can, sure that we can cut the, um, the out-of-district tuition. So, uh, I am going to message that out tomorrow. So again, just to be clear, that's non-essential purchases, okay? If we need paper, if we need toilet paper, whatever we need, we're going to get it for the schools. But we do need to really look at that because if you look at the educational supplies there, there's 200,000 sitting there, or, or at least when I ran this report, there was. You know, if you look up at the teacher line item, the, um, retirement line item. So I'll be looking at those and, um, monitoring them and bring it forward again next month to you. And anything, uh, does anyone have any specific questions on the operating budget?
Just keep that 297 in mind, that's in addition to the other four.
That's correct, yeah.
It's already been transferred from school choice.
Right.
That will be there next year and we'll have to fill it out.
That's correct.
Okay, I think this is helpful though, like doing this on a monthly basis, especially given the current financial situation. I think it's helpful, I know it's a lot of work, Pam, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate that you're updating us regularly so that we can make that adjustments in real time.
I'm, yeah. So on the next page, um, are your grants. And again, you know, grants, these are our entitlement grants, so we get them every year. And the amounts stay pretty much the same from year to year. I just liked you to see, uh, we did roll two over at the top, um, there, which we're expending down. Um, those will be completely expended. And, and I foresee most of these grants will be fully expended by year end. If they ever are not fully expended, just so that you know, we always can roll them over if that were the option. Uh, but at this point, I don't see that happening. Um, they're pretty straightforward, I don't know if anyone has any specific questions on any of the grants. No. So the third page, this one gets a little more challenging, right? It's our revolving accounts and, um, very first one that I wanted to bring to your attention, which I think I did at the last, um, meeting, was the athletic revolving. As of right now, I'm, I'm projecting that there would be a deficit. However, there are revenues that are going to come in from gate receipts and, uh, user fees. So, um, I projected an additional $35,000 in revenue, so I do think we'll be okay, whole at the end of the year. The next line item is about three-quarters of the way down, circuit breaker. Um, that's been a hot topic as we've talked about, just as a reminder. A million 38,000 was rolled over from last year, uh, which was part of our budget plan for this year anyways. Uh, the revenue to date is 1,294,080. That consists of the fourth quarter from FY24, the first and second quarters from this fiscal year. Uh, we have expended to date 1,059,000, encumbered 1.6 million dollars. Uh, without including any projected revenue, I, we would have a deficit of 386,000 that I would be projecting. However, we are going to get 863,000 in additional revenue. That's the third and fourth quarters for circuit breaker. We talked about the fact that, uh, FY24, the fourth quarter actually got posted into July, and we left it there. But we've talked internally with the town accountant, and she's going to back, because most of the time it does come in July, like early July, July 1st, or like 3rd, something like that. So it's going to come back, um, in this fiscal year. This is a revolving account, so kind of is irrelevant whether it's in FY25 or 26. It's, it's going to be there for us. So I am projecting that we would, um, at this point in time, uh, roll over about 476,000 dollars.
So to be fair.
Which is that.
Five quarters.
Yeah.
And the fifth quarter is getting rolled over. So if not for that fifth quarter, we would have no rollover.
Hardly any, yes.
Hardly any, and then it's that 1.038, that's the rollover from the prior year. So now we've expended, we've expelled the 1.6.
Yes. Well, it's encumbered.
It's encumbered, I'm sorry, spent it, but you see the gap there as well. You know, the gap, yeah.
Okay. The last line, uh, is the school choice account there at the bottom. And, uh, we carried over 789,000, revenue 167,000. We've expended 637,000 because 496,892. Okay, and encumbered, uh, 34,650, which I believe are, are, uh, projects that you had already, um, approved to be, uh, used for during this school year. I am projecting that there will be additional revenue of 169,000 dollars. That is a monthly amount of 28,307. So the projected end-of-year balance at school choice that I see right now is about 450,000 dollars, uh, which of course will be, hopefully be used for next year. Um, just to remind you, we will get an additional, um, approximately 300,000 dollars in revenue for the school choice students with the numbers if they stayed the same. It always fluctuates a little bit. As a reminder, that's 5,000 dollars per, um, student. There's also a special ed increment that goes on top of that, um, so.
Seniors in, in school choice, do we know?
We have some graduating.
Just look at that in terms of numbers, it can't be more than six, but.
So we'll have 455, and that's after we even use that money this year.
That's as I'm seeing it right now, if nothing were to change.
Also, if we look to other line items to cover the 290 or 246.
Yep, 297, yeah.
We would normally do anyway, although that's a large number.
Correct, yes, it's larger than normal, so.
So we're working with the leadership team right now. So it's not a freeze on anything that's essential or urgent. It's just now we're going to scrutinize a little bit more so, so we can look at supply and accounts that, where you might be able to do some transfers, because you may need school choice to help with next budget.
Right.
You exhaust it all this year, you won't have that.
So. I always end by saying it's imperative to remember that the balances provided are a snapshot in time, and we are changing constantly because. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam, I know it's a tough year, but don't let it dissuade you. I know it's a lot of work, as Sarah alluded to, but we'll get through it.
We're all looking to retire at least.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sweet. Don't wear suede. Oh, we're feeling a little downtrodden before the meeting, but, uh, okay, feeling more. Good, that's all it takes. What's next, Antonella?
Okay, our next item is budget development.
Okay, so that's me again. Um, so I just took that same document that we had, and I thought the best way or easiest way would be for us to just kind of walk through it again, remind people, anything that has changed, ask any questions. So what is new? January 22nd, the governor's budget came out. Uh, I now have that figure in there, I'm sorry to say. I was really hoping it would be more. Um, it's, we got the minimum aid, they increased minimum aid from, it used to be 30 dollars per student. Last year, they increased it to 60 dollars per student, and this year, they're increasing it 75 dollars per student. Um, that gets multiplied by our, uh, enrollment, which is 2468, isn't that funny? Two, that's our enrollment. And, um, the increase is 185,100 dollars that will be increased, um, you know, that goes directly to the town. So I don't have the other numbers. Um, I don't want to throw out any kind of projection, I will have it for the next meeting. Um, I'm honing in on that number, um, it, it'll probably be this, this week. I still want to, um, I've, I've put in some placeholders for special ed and our employees at Will, but I really would like to go over that again with Jenny, the new, um, services director, so we can ensure what are, what do we really project are our expenses? And what are our revenue lines, let me make sure we have it covered. So, um, you know, again, I apologize, I don't have it, there's just not enough hours in the day.
And it's just the governor's proposal, but for me, it's pretty close to the governor's proposal, and it's not the savior we were looking for.
Right, no.
At least chapter 70.
Along the theme of hope, though, um, last year, the governor's proposal kept the 30 dollars per student. And I think it was the Senate Ways and Means that knocked it up to 60.
I think you're right.
Governor came out of the gates with 75, maybe Ways and Means knocked it up again. Because any, any additional increase to chapter 70 would be helpful. It's nice that we're getting an increase, but we were hoping for more than, you know, 1.2%.
Is every district, do they get the same amount per child?
Uh, minimum aid.
That's minimum, yeah. And so it really depends on other factors. If you look at the history, um, you can see that there are years where we got, you know, 7% or one year, which is challenging to explain, but I think it's due to the Student Opportunity Act, we got a 15% increase. And then the year after that, we got a 1.7% increase. So there's definitely ebbs and flows. Um, but in the years where we were seeing 7% and 15%, which was really, uh, an aberration. But anyway, 7%, which had been an increase that was dissimilar to years past. I think it's because of a few things. One, you know that, um, uh, they had redefined what low income meant. And we had a growing student, um, population that was already designated as low income. And when they redefined that, it got even larger. And so that is something that's recognized in the Student Opportunity Act. Um, we also had a growing, though, to, um, at a slower rate, um, English language learner population. And our special education, um, percentage was about five years ago, it's probably closer to 17, 18%. And now it's over 20%, probably closer to 22%. And so all of those things have a little bit more significance in the chapter 70 formula, and certainly in the Student Opportunity, um, Act.
And we're down 50 students from the prior year, which is 2% decrease in itself. So that skews that 1.2%. Because we're off 50 students, 55 students.
54.
54.
Yep.
And we still get that money for school choice students as well?
You do, but you don't get, they're not, they're not the chapter 70 formula.
That goes.
So you subtract 38 students from our foundation enrollment.
That money's already gone, that doesn't, we never see the money for those students that are in the district.
Okay.
Right, but the money that comes into the district goes in that revolving account, which is what we just spent.
Right.
Doesn't matter.
The, the benefit there is it goes into a revolving account, and so you can maintain it year to year, where operational budget, you either expend it or you return it.
Right.
So the next one is your grants. Again, I'm just listing them there, as I said, these are your entitlement grants. We can pretty much, um, expect these from year to year, they might fluctuate a little bit. I thought it's important to remind you that we do have staff there. And I, behind the scenes in creating FY26, I've done the same thing, um, bring forward these positions under the grants. The only thing I want to remind you that does change is as salaries go up and the revenue comes down, the percentage, right, it's, the FTEs just starts to change a little bit, if that all makes sense to what I'm saying.
Um.
Are we not covering full FTEs then?
No.
Some of them are percentage based.
Saying.
Once we cover full, we still.
Might have, um, 17% of a position paid under an early childhood grant, and the rest is under the operating budget, but then.
Fully.
Yes.
Through the grants, there's only one or two that, it's really only that one.
True, there's, there's just a few.
Okay.
I just.
Understood, yep.
Yeah, it, it can change.
Title I, 1.65, teachers.
And then the rest is funded through the operating budget.
Correct, yes.
So there's that fluctuate or FTEs?
That's what I'm trying to say, is that just by, it doesn't change the full FTE, but it might 17, it might become 18.
Right over to the additional budget.
We distinguish the budgeted FTEs versus the grant-funded FTEs, right? In, in that list that we have.
That, last year you wanted that full chart, and I listed them out on where they were.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can we do that again?
Yeah.
Go forward, okay.
Can I just jump in, in terms of, so one, we have to make sure that we're supplementing and not supplanting. So they do compare Maple Shade and Mountain View. So we want, we always have to make sure that we're using the operating, operator, operating funds, uh, for the salaries and not supplementing title one funds for that. So just keeping that in mind.
Basically.
They don't look at paraprofessionals, though, and so.
With title one, as opposed to just balancing.
Yeah, yeah.
And Heather oversees the title one, title two, all the title grants. Um, so thank you, Heather. So on the next page, uh, your revolving accounts, same chart. I had something different that I thought, oh, we should just have the same chart. We're talking about the same conversation here. Um, the only thing that's different here is, uh, the tuition revolving, uh, which I put down below there. Again, I wanted to remind you, um, this is right now for the pre-K, uh, tuition. Um, but it's not reflected in here, and I apologize, but I will have it at the next meeting. I know that Ms. Lodi came and, and talked to you all at the last meeting about changing the model. Um, I don't have updated revenue figures here. I did increase it a bit from the 75 to, uh, 125, but I don't know if that's an accurate figure. So I will have that updated for you. Um, and again, I just wanted to remind you, you know, what, what are we expecting in? And, and actually, that 75,000 in projected revenue this year might be a little high. I, I think it came in, or is coming in a little lower because of the exact reasons that Ms. Lodi explained to everybody. Um, so I'll, I'll have updated, more accurate information for you. But again, um, those are positions that we are covering, um, under that preschool, uh, tuition account. So going forward with, um, any budget challenges we have, um, you know, we'll be talking about that if we want to fund anything else there. How long, you know, can it sustain it? Um, so all of those conversations, if that makes sense? Uh, the next page is your circuit breaker. And again, I know a lot of this is repetitive, so I apologize. But, um, a circuit breaker is, is a big moving piece. And again, for folks out there that don't know what circuit breaker is, um, there's a, uh, per pupil threshold of this year, as it changes yearly, 52,419 dollars. And any expenditures per pupil under special ed with eligible, there's certain criteria, and I don't know a ton about it, that's more at student services. But, and they have to be eligible expenditures. If it goes up and over that 52,000 dollars, that amount that's over that threshold, we get 75% reimbursement back. And that's the revenue that we were talking about, that we rolled over a million 38, that this year, uh, we're getting the 1.6 plus the fourth quarter that I, uh, talked about. Um, you know, this is one of the many, uh, moving pieces. One thing I am hoping happens, if you look on this chart over to the right, you'll see additional extraordinary relief, and that we've only, the district has only, at least since I've been here, only received this twice. Um, however, it was a pretty significant amount, um, in FY23, and that was 343,000 dollars. And those expenditures, correct me if I'm wrong, Gordon, but I believe that it's, if you go from one year to the next with 125% more expenditures for certain eligible items, then you can qualify for this extraordinary relief. They don't do it until, I think it's the February, March timeframe. It happens sooner than the other circuit breaker, and it happens faster. So you find out, like, within a few weeks, I believe, if you're going to get it, and then you get it, and it, it's meant to help you right now, you cannot roll it over. So I am really hoping that we get some extraordinary relief. So this would be another one of those moving pieces behind the scenes that could potentially help us. You see what I'm saying?
Have we looked at that in terms of, uh, meeting that criteria, the 100 and?
So they're starting to look at it now.
Yeah, they're just.
The window doesn't open until.
February.
Like February.
Yeah, I think it's like mid-February or something.
But they, but they are starting to look at it now in terms of who might be eligible.
Our claims have gone down.
So.
Our net claims are down, so I wondered if we're not as from last year, weren't eligible last year.
Oh, I see what you mean, so you have eligible expenses of 4.2 million, the net claim 2.3 million.
I mean, we can hope, see?
Yep.
Got a few things to hope for.
We did have.
We do.
Significant tuition increases, yeah.
Yeah, I'm reminding everybody, those out-of-district tuitions went up 14%. That's definitely had an impact on all districts. Um, the next one is your school choice. Again, we've had these, um, conversations. I put a, a couple of different charts in here for you. I thought you might want to see where the students are coming from, from the other districts. Um, so I put that information in there for you. Um, top one there, you see the enrollment trends. Um, we're happy to say that the last few years, our receiving choice is higher than our sending. So this is all, uh, you know, good information as well. And again, this is, um, a school committee decision annually on whether we participate in school choice, and if we do, at what grade levels and how many students. So you're in complete control of that, we're already getting calls into central office. I'm sure Samantha can attest, um, lots of phone calls coming in to find out. Does that happen in February?
March.
March, okay, thank you. So that'll be coming up in, in March. Um, but just wanted to remind you, and, and again, I'm expecting right now about 450,000 to roll over in that account. Um, then it's just your, you know, I, I wanted to remind everybody, we have approximately 36 million dollar budget. 83% is your, on the, all under the salary side, um, about 30 million dollars. Of course, now it's down 496,000 because of what I moved. Um, teachers, 21,643,000. We have four retirees as of right now. Um, one might pull that, that, rescind that retirement. Um, in the placeholder, uh, in my spreadsheets behind the scenes, I always want to be very transparent what I do. Um, we put in a master's eight level of 74,134 as a placeholder. Um, so when someone goes out at a higher rate, we hire lower, we're hoping to, you know, reap those benefits. Sometimes some positions you can't, so some come in lower, some come in higher, but that's an average. Um, your unity paras, you have 100, oh, I forgot to say, we have 260, uh, unit A teachers on that pay scale. We have 105 paraprofessionals, that's 2.4 million dollars. We have three retirees at the end of this year. Um, secretaries, we have, uh, 90. Secretaries, we have 19 secretaries, it's about a million dollars. We have one retiring. Your custodians, another million dollars there. One retiree at the end of the year, we have 18 custodians. Administration, there's 15 total administrators and four central office clerical staff with individual contracts. That's about $1.8 million. Seven of those contracts are up this year. So we'll be in negotiations with them. We're also going to be in negotiations with secretaries and custodians this year. Employment at will agreements, these are for, was about $450,000 in that group. And, and it varies from year to year on our, on our needs. It really is determined by special ed needs and, you know, do, do we need additional OT or PT or speech? And, and we need to, you know, have some folks come in. Some are just for five hours a week, some might be 30 hours a week. So they're all different. And I'm, when I referenced earlier that I wanted to look at, I'm still looking at employment at will agreements. That's what I'm referring to, kind of working with the administrator of health services as well as student services. Put our heads together to make sure that we're covering what we need for FY26. And your expense side of the budget, 17%, that's just shy of $6 million. I'm just reminding you is that $3 million of that $6 million is in the operating budget under your special ed line items. Those are real line items right there. In addition, we have the early childhood grant, we have the IDEA grant, we have the $1 million we rolled over that we expended and the 1.6 million dollars plus the 496, that's all another $4 million. The grand total there is $7 million. Again, just being transparent, I mean, we are mandated to take care of all of our students, but this is a large portion and I feel compelled to make sure it's very clear where our expenditures are going. You know, as I write down here, my concern is that we're down $1.5 million between lack of rollover and school choice having to cover the 500,000 this year in addition to the contractual obligations. Again, I don't have that number, but I'm getting close for you. Any, say that again? Yeah, oh, definitely the next meeting, yes.
Thank you.
Any questions before I go on to the next page? Okay. Our ESER grant is no longer with us. That was a $2.2 million grant. We have programs that have been funded under ESER and, you know, we need to talk about those. And that will come up during the budget process, just as a reminder. We funded the summer academy programs, we've funded professional development, curriculum materials, software licenses. We had some discussion on digital licenses. So we've listed it out here and we've also listed, you know, some items that were funded by ESER that now we need to take over. I'm going to let Ms. Brown take it from here because there are some items that we have not renewed and she's much better at this and thank you, Heather.
Okay, so what you see here is really a mix of curricular materials, universal assessment tools and personalized learning. And I just wanted you to know that what Pam alluded to, every year we look at, or I look at usage and see where we can cut things. So one thing that's not on here that we do have this year, but the usage is so low, we won't be renewing Turn It In, which will save us $9,000. In the past, we had a high usage of New Zealand LA and the, the usage went way down. So that cut was $25,000. We used to have a platform called Mastery Connect, which is replaced by Panorama and it's $12,000 less. There's really no redundancy here in terms of iReady and, and the personalized learning and some of the other licenses we have. So for example, ST Math, we have K to 5. And in those grades, while we have iReady math assessment licenses, we don't have the personalized learning. And the reason being is because we didn't want that redundancy. During COVID, we had the ESER money, we had a little bit of flexibility. We've removed wherever we can cut back. Same with the DIBELS has replaced the iReady assessment for reading K to 2. So we're not paying for iReady assessment licenses. So there's no redundancy there. We went to School Messenger that replaced Blooms, which was $9,000. So we have made some cuts and we are looking further here. So EdPuzzle, while it's very well-used, is not necessarily essential for the curriculum. So that's one thing we're looking at. Focabulary is highly used at the 2, 3 to 5 schools. So we need to talk to the buildings about that. Lexia is quite expensive, but it's high usage. It's personalized reading, learning, uh, reading instruction that they use at the K to 2 at Meadowbrook. And then also at Burchland for their interventions. And then there are some individual licenses that I get for Maple Shade and Mountain View for kids who need, who are on ed plans and need some extra support that's more appropriate with Lexia. And if you have questions about any of the other ones, those are really the only ones that we're kind of looking at because everything else, like I said, is curricular, it's assessment or it really provides universal access for all of our students.
And I'm sorry, I should have put totals on this for you. I'll do that going forward. On the top section there, that's an increase of $17,194. And the bottom section there is an additional 104,156. So altogether, $121,350 increase.
Pam, do you know the budget FY24 for this?
I'm sorry, say that.
FY24 budget?
Yep.
Budgeted amount?
Oh, for.
Did we drop significantly into that 120, is that why?
Because in FY24, we had grant funding.
Yeah.
And our curriculum, things were changing, a curricula was changing.
So FY24, we bought, we, we, we used ESER money for this.
In addition to grants, that additional grants. So Desi was really pushing for high-quality instructional materials. So we got, I would say, at least half a million of grants for all of our new literacy materials, all of our math materials. So we were able to implement that curriculum, the professional development. And so now what we're paying for is our licenses that you see on here. But in terms of getting us started, it was really the competitive grants that helped us. So ESER padded it a little bit, but really.
About the grants.
Yeah, we were able to get quite a few through this.
Probably paid part of the licensing, at least.
It paid for licensing that year. Paid for all the teacher manuals, it paid for all the professional development, it paid for workbooks.
So it's great when those funds are available.
Right.
However, you, you do need to know that the high-quality curricular materials are now something that Desi pushes. And while unlike other states where they don't mandate that you use certain things, they have incentives and decentives. So you can't apply for certain grants unless you can show that you're using certain things. They have a whole curriculum dashboard now where you have to put things. So it's not something we can really roll back, but it definitely, the grants to help us start it.
Initial grants were free, that's it. So that allowed us to get in and purchase the curricular materials and have the initial professional development, which we would have funded, had to have funded by ourselves.
With our tiny Title II A budget that used to be 60,000 and now is 37.
Where's textbook renewal, where does that fall off?
Um, so that's actually, we have curriculum renewal.
Curriculum renewal.
Eighty thousand.
And so that's a cycle for different departments to go through. However, there was one year, and Pammy might be able to remember, I don't have it in front of me, where we kind of put that on pause so that we could get additional workbooks and things for folks.
Five years ago, I have to.
I don't think it was five years ago.
Really?
It was just out of COVID, I think.
Yeah.
Out of COVID, I was thinking of like before COVID, sorry.
So.
ESER came.
Let's remind you.
Well, I'm just thinking of things like the I Am licensing, that would be curriculum renewal.
Well, right now, just so you know, pre-K is up. So I'm, they're also kind of expecting to get some curricular materials. So pre-K, the high school science and sixth to eighth grade ELA. So they're working on finding things. So that money is kind of set aside for them. Obviously, things happen, but.
Renewal historically would be similar to what the Desi grants did for us with the literacy program. So that was a year where we could use curriculum renewal for other things. But it's, we give to the departments in the cycle who are next up so that they can research new materials and we can look at what the professional development costs will be and make sure that they have that support. That's how we.
And then we do have supply lines at each of the buildings with textbooks for workbooks and things like that. But traditionally, we haven't had really software lines on there because that's kind of increased over the time. And a lot of these things is much more affordable and cost-effective to do it centrally than to have each building purchasing their own.
Could the building line items be used to supplement the cost at the district level?
Yeah.
I think that's where we have to have discussions around Lexia and Focabulary. You know, because those at one time were in building. And then we started to centralize because it seemed more efficient. And we had more purchasing power that way. So we have to have those discussions with the leadership team and specific buildings using those. To answer your question regarding FY24, one of the bigger cost shifts was.
But we're not renewing.
Reddicker to Power School. The Reddicker, I want to say had a cost somewhere around 50,000 a year.
Yeah, Power School's a lot more.
Jumped to Power School, which was a needed jump.
Yeah.
I mean, we needed to be on the 21st century, but it went to 102,000. With Power School, Ms. Brown was talking about School Messenger. So Power School purchased School Messenger and so. That's a program that's linked to Power School and should be easier to use and incorporate. And so we did go to School Messenger as well. And so we've started to cut back on some of the other communication software.
So we're running lean, we don't have redundancies.
Yeah, and the area that were, there was one other item, oh, ST Math. So ST Math, there was, as we were running iReady and ST Math, there was some redundancy there. We had actually gotten into ST Math because we had a grant and we had professional development. And I want to say that comes back maybe.
It's funny because we're not getting grant funds, but we're still part of a, I think, I can't remember the word.
Ensorship. Ensorship, no.
I guess so, but that's not cohort. So we're, they're one of the first cohorts and so we're still grandfathered in. So we still have reduced cost on ST Math. So that saves us some money as well, rather than paying the.
Right about grants, I was just thinking about even this professional software for the nurses, the SNAP software there that was covered under the grant, the DPH grant, but then they disallowed it. So she can't, so we, we didn't have a choice. We have to pick up that, you know.
Right.
$9,000. And so it's a little here, a little there and.
Well, even Power School's gone up 10% in one year.
And we didn't have to pay for the digital privacy legal protection for a while. We should have been, but you know, that was a new thing that we, we have, so.
Yeah, we just have to watch these, I guess, going forward in terms of it's the way things are going and we just can't overdo it, I suppose.
And I think, yeah, to keep the personalized learning lean and not have redundancies in assessments. And the one place that we really can't cut back on is the curriculum licenses because that's basically how you get access to the curriculum, so.
And that's support.
I mean, don't, doesn't the curriculum have resources for them to use? Like so that they wouldn't have to use EdPuzzle, for example?
So EdPuzzle, not something that you can really replicate. But you know, if you, it's, you know, you're looking at some of these things, you're like, ah. There, there is a free version, but the teachers only have a certain amount that they can do. But basically, it's, it's really used a lot in the science and social studies classes because it creates accountability for watching videos. So if a kid's watching videos, it's makes them stop and actually answer questions. So they're not like watching the video. So I have to say, like, all of these tools have a good use, but we are aware that we have to see where we, you know, where there might be places where we have to make hard decisions. But yes, to answer your question, Greg, we're not out there like looking for new things.
Yeah, okay. Which would be nice if we could.
Yeah, but we're not there.
Yep.
Yeah. And so ever since ESER, we've best, definitely been cutting.
Cutting back, yeah.
So we're going to continue. We had discussions around all of this with the leadership team last week. We'll continue those discussions on this Thursday. We talked to them a little bit about supply accounts because we've gone through a lot of what we've gone through with you over the last few meetings in terms of what we've transferred from school choice, what it looks like as we start to really look at what level services would be for next year's budget. And there's a good chance that we're going to need from school choice money to offset what that may be in terms of what we're getting in Chapter 70, what we may get from the town. And then there's still maybe some hard discussions.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
The last page in your packet is just an update on the LPVEC. I had told you that they were requesting additional positions. I wanted you to know that the LPVZ, LPVEC board voted not to add an assistant principal position in FY26. So I thought that was important for you to know.
You were part of that discussion?
Oh, I know that, yeah. You had already done the work in your meeting. They already felt it.
Yes, I, yes, there was conversation.
Because I brought it up, the rest of the board would run along, because.
Yeah, we have to look at everybody's numbers and the impact it has on us. So do you have any questions on anything? So again, the next meeting, I will have our number and one session and welcome.
All right, your next item.
Just jump into it?
Yes, update on the William J. McLeod family's daughter, Roxanne.
So I'm happy to.
Nice.
It is really nice and he's the nicest, most generous, kind man. I called him right before our meeting to let him know that we had received the paperwork and that I was going to be bringing this forward to the school committee. That, you know, the scholarship had already been set up, that we received his $40,000 check, that he can be confident that that scholarship is going to be in place this year and given to students. But that we have now received, it, it's just amazing when I say this, 2,500 shares of Apple stock. And you know, that is at a market value of 500, almost 575,000 dollars. So this is, you know, this is going to live on for a very, very long time forever in his daughter's name. And we will happily send kids of, what, at least $30,000 each year to students going into the medical field, as long as there's a financial need. And he's leaving that to the administration to go over to find those students. And he doesn't care if this is a doctor, a nurse, a C, C, PA, an X-ray lab technician, as long as they're going in the medical field and will be helping people. That's his, so I just wanted to bring that update to you because that.
How do we use these funds? Is it dividends that we get to catch up?
Okay. It will come back to the town. We have a financial person. So I've worked with Don Fonte, the town treasurer collector, as well as Kim Collins, the finance director. And then them working with our finance people that work for the town, you know, a third-party contracted service. And so our person worked with his person and the share. So very, very exciting. So yes, very generous man.
You're thinking this year is a 40,000?
Well, he sent a $40,000 check, but it's 30,000 that he feels will be the annual interest on it. So he wanted to make sure that there was enough funds there.
You think he'll come to the awards night?
I, I highly doubt it. He's 91, he lives in another state. I, I will certainly, I, I send an invite.
Him in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that, I think, like having him do a message or something.
Yeah.
Support a message, that'd be nice.
Nice.
I mean, he's, he's very, he's very, he's a lot of fun to talk.
Maybe you got that? You're on it?
Video, you can do, Jamie, we'll, we'll talk.
So that was just an update, thank you.
Good news, let's just send it there.
I know, that's.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm running the meeting.
I'm running. All right. The next four items are acceptance of some money from Gritten Barrett.
Yep.
Each of our schools.
Want me to start to go through them? Okay, the first one is from Principal Renee Lodi, from Gritten Barrett Photography as the commission check to go into the gift account and that amount is 2,794.75. Each one has to be.
I move that we accept the check from Gritten Barrett for $2,794.75 and place it in the Meadowbrook gift account, second.
And one second by William. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Five to zero.
I move that we accept the one. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're ahead.
They're all the same, right?
Yeah, they are.
$1,374.99 from Gritten Barrett to be put in the Mountain View gift account.
Second, thank you, Sarah. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Five to zero.
Two for Mountain View, Pam?[1776.34] Uh, it's a sign on bonus. Yeah.
Yeah.
I accept, or I move to accept the five hundred dollar check from Gritten Barrett for the be put into the Mountain View gift account.
Most by Greg. Second, second advice Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Five to zero.
And I move that we accept the two thousand one hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixty six cents on Gritten Barrett. Could be put in the gift account.
Purcell, Purcell.
I'm sorry, Purcell, Purcell.
Second by Greg. Second by William. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Next. Oh, thanks.
Thank you. I'll get those into the.
Next, their business. Is the twenty twenty six school year calendar.
Definitely.
In your packet, um, you have the draft version of the twenty five, twenty six calendar and the summer version of twenty four, twenty five. As Trullio was saying, we did have discussion at the collaborative committee of lively exchange around the calendar and I don't know if you want to go through the notes or do you want me to recall some or?
So some of the concerns that were brought forward by collaborative committee were concerns around food insecurity for students during that time. Is this, what is this?
So, yeah, that's a good point. Yeah.
Made up of union representation from each of the sites. What part of the calendar are you?
Alright, so then, yeah, let me, let me backtrack.
I'm sorry. So we'll get the winter break. Looking at taking the twenty.
Twenty second.
Second and twenty third. Yep. And then having professional development on the second. So having the ten days, school days closed for school, for students. Nine days closed for educators with a day of professional development on the tail end. So that was a concern was if students would have concerns around food. And there was concerns brought forward around special education and MLL students and what the additional day and a half off would do for them in terms of continuity of instruction. There were some concerns around building air conditioners if we went further into the month of June. Another concern. There was a note about AP testing. But I will say that post that meeting, I went back through the two calendars and boarding and how you can correct me if I'm wrong, AP testing is typically the first two weeks of May.
Yeah.
There's, there's not a discrepancy in terms of the number of.
Seniors needed to get it done before they.
Okay, but there's not a discrepancy in the number of teaching days. This year, in this year's calendar compared to if we were to make that adjustment for next year's calendar, it's equal. Between September and December and then from January to the end of April, because I wasn't sure when, like if they counted the first full week of May or if it began like May one. So there's no discrepancy in terms of teaching days prior to that occurring. So that was a concern. But like I said, I did.
May fifth through May sixteen.
And it's, like I said.
So that's the first full week of May.
It's equal in terms of the end of April last year to this year. It was also made mention that if there were a professional development day on the second, that because access testing begins in the month of January, that there be some concession made for educators to have some time to plan for access testing as a result. There was also a concern around if ELPS was to open for educators and other local districts were closed. There was concerns around employee childcare. The only thing I would say to that is we don't always follow other districts in terms of when our professional development days are. So there's also a chance that that could come up in terms of childcare and absences. But the union did make note that they have talked to their membership broadly about not not using an absence on a professional development day unless it was absolutely necessary. They said that they had some conversation about that at a recent union meeting. And then there was conversation around how the days leading up to school breaks are used. There was an invitation made to any of the members of the committee who want to go to a school on the day before a break to see what happens. So I said I would pass that along to make sure that everyone was aware of that. And you know, there was conversation around, some individuals said that there are times when that's not as academic as maybe we've been describing. And some individuals said that they're giving quizzes and tests. So it's very mixed. But overall, Gordon, you were there, so you can tell me if I misrepresented any of the information.
Hit the point. Um, basically their proposal would be to come in on the twenty second and twenty third. And sort of reverse this year's vacation into next year. And then everybody's off on the second. And the only other point I think they made around the twenty second and twenty third is they thought there definitely was discussion around that there is a mixture of how those days are used in terms of lesson planning and so forth. But they thought there was more value in what was going on on the twenty second and twenty third than there might be on the fifteenth and twelfth and fifteenth of June. Or depending on how far you go into June.
Right.
How many of our students take the access test?
Yeah, the amount of kiddos. How you exactly?
Sixty.
I would say around, leave out of it. Cause even kindergarten nurse, kindergarten screening, so about twenty to thirty. I have to find the exact number.
Twenty to thirty in the whole district. But there's less educators who can service those twenty to thirty students across all the subtests.
Right.
So the scheduling becomes more challenging. So do we have like one person that does elementary and one person that does high school?
So we have one person who does K to two, one person does three to five and helps out K to two. And then somebody who does six to twelve.
You only have three.
There's three, but they share the caseload, travel between the sites, which makes the scheduling a little bit more challenging.
Twenty something students.
Probably more around thirty.
Well, not including flat kids who don't have to take the access anymore.
Well, that was the feedback. I said I would bring it back. I, like we said last time.
Yeah, we did bring it also on Thursday. We talked a little bit about it, the leadership team. There, you know, they didn't necessarily have concerns around the twenty second and twenty third. They were okay however that went, but they were concerned about attendance on the second.
For educators?
Yeah. In terms of if we did professional development on the second on that Friday for a variety of reasons.
Members have increased their forty six kiddos.
So we should go back to the original calendar is what we're thinking in terms of the feedback that we asked for. I mean, it's.
I said, I, it's clear that it was feedback.
Yep.
That it was no guarantee.
No guarantee, but the feedback makes sense. And. Beth.
You can make a motion.
What do you think, Amy?
I did express my concerns last time about having educators come back on that Friday, the second. But the one piece that I do really like about it, especially now coming up this week. There's a professional day midweek and I definitely see the value of having that not interrupting instruction in the middle of January. So I see both sides. I think that there's going to be opinions either way, but that's kind of one thing I'm a little bit focused.
About the twenty second and twenty third. Or the twenty third and, yeah, twenty, twenty second, twenty third. If we want the second, we're going to do one, we do one or the other, right?
And the twenty third would be.
Saying if we were going to do the second for educators, we were saying we were going to take the twenty second and twenty third off.
That's right.
Right.
Yes.
Oh, we were, yeah.
Yes, we were saying we would close the twenty second and.
Exactly what, exactly none of the feedback which we got though. That's all I'm saying.
No, it sounds like people didn't.
Nope.
My second.
But they want the twenty second, twenty third. Yeah.
They want to come in.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Yes.
And there are some calendars around us posted that have exactly that. So you have, I think it was Long Meadow. Agawam, maybe in Westfield.
So we should plan on the twenty third and the twenty second and twenty third. And the question is whether they come, we come the second or not. Or no.
I'm saying you can make a proposal for the calendar based on what you think.
What else? What is attendance typically like the day before these vacations?
For students?
For students?
Yes.
It's, I don't have the numbers.
But it's going to happen whether it's the Friday or the Tuesday.
Exactly.
I know, but that's two days.
We'll have more people on Friday if we come to school till Tuesday. If we don't, if we don't have school Monday or Tuesday, we'll have a lot less on Friday.
You actually have lower attendance, I think, on that Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And you do on, say, the twenty second and twenty third, you know.
But we shouldn't.
I'm not sure what families will do.
Day before becomes the day before.
When you have the week.
But a half day, the half day, and it counts as a full day, which is instructional minutes that we're not capitalizing on.
That's fair.
And we've talked about this in the past. We are already dangerously close as a district. We look at academic learning time and now you factor in breakfast and you factor in lunch. And those are compensatory on half days. We are very, very close to not meeting our academic learning time requirements by the state. I've said it many, many years now.
But we do meet it.
Right? Barely. And that's being generous in terms of what we call arrival.
I am.
And what we call.
There are districts.
We call.
That are way less.
The very short academic day to begin with.
Well, we should lengthen that limit.
We could do that as well. You want to lengthen the school days?
I think that's a negotiable item. Okay, anyway. How are you going to handle this? Chair?
I just asked someone to make a motion.
Yeah.
But I do. I feel like attendance is going to be low for two days instead of one.
The twenty second, twenty third?
Yes.
What about the second? You want the second?
I think it makes sense to have.
That's, that's different attendance. So you're talking versus staff. Yeah.
But I think if we go to the twenty second and twenty third, we don't do the second. Right? That's like the way it used to be. Go back.
We haven't had this many days off in a while.
It happens like every four to five years, basically.
I mean, yes, this last year, but next year won't.
Or this year, yeah.
This year and next year.
This year was worse.
It's like reversal.
Was, yeah, it's a reversal.
Right.
But it's not often that we have all these days off.
What are you thinking, William?
I, again, I, I have the, the position that the teachers, we need to consider giving teachers as much break as possible. You want them to come back refreshed and ready. I personally didn't see a problem with coming back on, on that Friday. We, they come back on that Friday on the second. But they've got the twenties, they've got the twenty second and twenty third off. But it sounds like they as a collective body don't want the state don't want to come back on Friday.
They were not in favor of coming back. Not necessarily on the Friday. They were not in favor of having the twenty second and the twenty third off more so.
And we had presented that, that you had made that contribution and, and around that, that we're looking not just at students getting a break and so forth, but that everybody by the time you reach December, the December break, that is, everybody is in need of a break. But it was a lively discussion and it centered.
So if we don't go to the second though, is it worth the Monday and Tuesday? For the students, which I think it is because it pushes us in the June, which is always a problem.
And the thirty, you're saying is a half a day. Twenty third is a half a day. Yeah, Monday's a full day, Tuesday's a half a day.
Right.
And then nobody comes back to school until the sixth.
Correct.
Correct.
Third, fourth, fifth.
And the way the original draft calendar.
Yes.
Then you had, you, you have what Amy was talking about, the twenty eighth PD day. So it is on a Wednesday.
That's what I wanted. Miss, give it to him. So I move that we approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six calendar, including class for students on December twenty second, half day, December twenty third. And all staff and students returning on January fifth.
Second.
The different things. You said second, you said fifth.
No, second, like.
He's second.
Motion made by Greg. Seconded by William. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those not in favor?
Nay, nay.
So that passes three to two.
Hey, great draft.
And I would love the schedules on those days. I will make it a point to go out into the post.
Draft can be posted.
Absolutely. I encourage everybody to do it.
Absolutely.
All right. And you can tell the administrators as well, because that was another, that was brought up, was that administrators sometimes endorse what this looks like. And the comment was also made that this should be concern brought forward to them and not just to the union memberships.
And I did. But beiterate it now that the calendars.
All right, new business. The twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school committee meeting calendar.
So in your package, you have recommended dates. Starting in, well, you have your July one reorganization meeting. It's tentative. Traditionally, we've tried to do it on July one if possible. And pick up again in August. And then you see just the two meetings per month going throughout.
Looks good.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school committee meeting calendar as presented.
Motion made by Greg. Seconded by Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes five to zero. Our next item, approval of the Mountain View's fifth grade field trips, Sunny's Place in Summers, Connecticut on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Under students, thirty five adults.
PTO is going to subsidize the cost.
The whole cost?
Uh, I think, no, I think they're going to subsidize so that it brings it down for per student, but.
As the majority.
Great. Great.
All right.
I move that we approve the fifth grade field trip to Sunny's Place, Summers, Connecticut, scheduled for May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five as presented.
Given by Greg. Seconded by Amy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes five to zero. Next item, select of a school committee member for negotiations for the.
So we have two groups and actually was highlighted by Mrs. Blair's financial report. There are two groups that we'll be negotiating with, hopefully starting in February. And one of which is the custodians union. And then the next item is seeking a member for the negotiations team for the secretaries union.
Has anyone done any of those before? No.
No.
Does anyone have interest in doing any of those?
Teachers and parents.
I'm happy to do one of them.
Which one?
No one.
I can do one too, so. Which one, uh, you want Anthony to pick which one we get?
Yes.
Okay. Greg, you can do the secretaries. And me, you can do the custodian. All right.
Okay.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
Can we make a motion?
We, we appoint, to make the appointments, we should, yeah.
Can I do it?
Sarah's going to do it. Go ahead, Sarah.
I move to appoint Greg to be the bargaining member for the school committee on the secretaries union.
Second.
Oh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Five to zero.
And I move to appoint Amy to be the bargaining member of the school committee for the custodians unit.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's five to zero. Okay, our last item. Thank you for go volunteer to do that. Joint meeting of the school committee and town council on school year twenty six budget development, February eleventh.
So this is just another opportunity for us since we didn't post the last meeting.
Mm hmm.
There anyway.
Right, right.
We can sit again with the, the council. Connor O'Shea had offered the eleven. They had a pretty lengthy agenda tomorrow night, so they asked that we come. We'll have more information in two.
It's a better date.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the tenth. No, but the tenth is our regular meeting and then the eleventh would be their meeting.
Yep.
Six o'clock?
They, last time I joined online and they had adjusted the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Probably the first time.
It'd be nice for us because we were there.
But I joined and then I realized that I was.
Oh, late?
Yes, I got on right as the public hearing ended.
Come on, I was like, I'm at.
We're out. Yeah, they bumped us. Never happens.
So we anticipate that.
I'll look at the agenda. I'll let you know. I can.
I just want to not be there on time.
Tomorrow's agenda is pretty full. I don't know what the eleven. Hope it's, that's full, but it'll probably be full. I hope it's, that's full, but it'll probably be full of their budget items too.
Option, my virtual?
Yes, they have, they have a member, yeah. So you should be able to do that, yes.
Yeah, because we'll post it as a meeting. So we'll open if we have a call. And we, and we know people at Alcatz who will be able to. Invest, Jamie. Hey, Brett, take this thing home, it's an honor.
I would like to make a motion to close the meeting. So moved. Seconded by William. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five to zero. It's now off, everyone.